For the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
All right, then I will call this meeting to order and all those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will ask for a roll call.
Brianna Beslik.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Abby Hale.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here.
Are there any revisions to the agenda that any of the board members would like to make?
I'll move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. It passes. We have approved agenda. And now, jumping into administrative reports, we'll jump right into Mr. Brad Smith for summer school. I was gonna say Sunday School.
Should add, he's the newly graduated Assistant Principal from UW Madison.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I'm Brad Smith, the summer school administrator. To start out with some of the highlights, we had 903 students from 4K to 11th grade. This included those that enrolled in at least one class or swimming lessons as well. It was a comprehensive program that's spanning academics, enrichment, and physical education. For this summer, for our targeted academic intervention strategies, I worked with Mrs. Siegslag on creating a summer sampler course where 67 of our elementary students were able to be placed in the second grade neighborhood, play games, make snacks, and do all kinds of other things while also getting pulled out for intervention. So they're all in one space at one time, so it made it easier because time is everything in schools, right? So we were able to pull kids and get their intervention in and still have them go off and do something fun. At the middle school, we had around 20 middle school students that received targeted support by Mrs. Manke. I was talking to her as well. She's thinking, we'll probably talk a little bit more about doing something similar. At the middle school, it might look a little bit different. So they focused on foundational literacy and math skills, and their data was put into next path so that their upcoming teachers will have some of that data as they go into the school year. Some program highlights, we had a lot of new classes this year, cool campers, fun with French, and we also had a Spanish class at the elementary school and an intro to Spanish at the middle school. X Marks the Spot was by Max Hardy. He would go around and it would kind of like a treasure hunt each day. So some cool programs. Our theater program, we had two new staff members this year that took it on, and they also had to do them at their respective schools, their theater presentation because of what was going on at the auditorium. But it all went well and really good showing there. We had a lot of music and art classes. You can see some of our middle schoolers got to use the wheel to make some of their clay projects. And there was consistent sub-coverage. I had a lot of subs reach out so I could find them, and I didn't have to worry too much on being able to fill someone, so that was great. We had a lot of hands-on learning experiences. The cooking classes featured student creation, created culinary demonstrations. They made really cool, this was in a baking class, they got to design their whatever they wanted. Another thing that was really cool this year is for bowling, I worked with Mrs. Everson, we got, we were able to get a ramp for a student so that they could go and participate with the bowling class, and we had some specialized transportation for them as well. Collaborative leadership, so there was strong collaboration between the administrators, the teachers, and the support staff. During both sessions, I had to be out for about a week as I was attending grad school, so for the first week, Wendy, Erin, Chuck, and Jamie provided the onsite leadership for me, and they kept things moving along, helped me out with budget stuff. And then session two, Sarah Wellman was able to step in for that week and help out and do the same. Staff appreciated clear communication and consistent support throughout both sessions. Some future planning that I was thinking about is moving forward at the middle school, we have some classes that are our kids going into fifth grade in classes with kids going into eighth grade. It feels like maybe some planning can be done to level some of those groups. When we get into some of those sporting classes, you have an eighth grader and a fifth grader, it can be a little intimidating for definitely a fifth grader. So we're gonna be looking at some different groupings, fourth and fifth and sixth and seventh, explore new course offerings. And one thing that I wasn't able to do this year was the teacher survey. With school and everything going on, it kind of blanked on me, but I really need to make sure I do that next year, and also I'm planning to do one in the winter just to hear insights and what we can do better for summer school. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks Brad. Is, just generally, do you have a sense for what the, any student, how many classes they typically might take? I mean, is it two, three?
Typically, typically students take four classes. So our periods are, they're 57 minutes, so it's from eight o'clock to eight fifty-seven. I'd say most of the time, especially elementary school, it's, they're taking four classes. And we also have like our 5K program, that's the whole four-hour block. And then at middle school, as they get older, they might just take more elective courses, like they might just take their band classes or take two or three. But yeah, it's usually four for the most part, for the, especially elementary.
Good, thank you. There's a lot of kids that participated, 903?
Yeah, lots of kids, a lot from out of districts. And our swim program, I didn't really highlight that, but our swim program did a lot of great work this summer, too. I can't think of the numbers offhand, but they had, they had, I don't know, at least, there's, Abby knows, they have, they have like five instructors, and each of them is doing five, has about five kids in their swimming class, and they are doing it like every 45 minutes, having a rotation. So there's, there's a lot of kids that we're able to provide swimming lessons to as well.
Thank you.
All right. I was just gonna say, thanks for the fresh set of eyes on things. I think some of the things that you highlighted in there about, you know, having all the kids grouped together, like, summer school is always for fun, but it's an extension of their learning, and so you offered that with some fun on the side, so it didn't create this like, ah, I just have to go to learn. So I think that that was awesome. And some of the things that I heard about as an incoming, you know, fifth grader was, yes, I'm playing with these eighth graders. And we talked about the challenge and how that can make us a better player, but I think that's really good insight to have that and always try and make things better.
For sure.
So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
And next up is Dr. Olson.
Yes, I'm gonna invite Officer Johnson up to the podium to share a summary of all of her work for the past school year.
Thank you for having me again, I appreciate it. It's been about a year, I guess, since I saw you. So I assume we're gonna do these yearly reports rather than quarterly or biannually, whatever. So this is from, this is basically the 2024 to 2025 school year. Oh, next slide, sorry. One of the questions that always comes up is what training that I get to kind of serve all the kids. And every year, I go to the School Resource Officer Conference, that's usually like the second week in June, so I was able to go to that this year. And just those, so that's a list of the classes that I took while I was there, and I'm already actually putting one of them into play, the first class, the sextortion with Jordan DeMay. I've already presented to the Lakeside Lutheran High School football team about this young man that committed suicide because he was being sextorted, and I have plans to do it with all of the athletes, too, at the public high school. So I'm already incorporating stuff that I learned at the SRO school to bring back to the kids. The other fun thing that I got to participate in with Mr. Nate Olson and Kaylee Spiegel, we went to the annual youth unity summit at McFarland High School. They invited me to go this year. It was really kind of eye-opening to talk to the kids about different things that they see from their perspective, so I hope to be included in that one again. What else? I think the next slide. We hosted a training right at the end of the school year from the Wisconsin Department of Justice for Behavior Threat Assessment to make behavior threat assessment teams. So if we have kiddos who are in crisis, we actually have teams that can support them at each of the schools, we just have to figure out who's gonna be on those teams. But we had 121 participants, I think, that came from all over the area to get that training here. And then I also just recently attended the Dare Officer Conference, and that was some of the, the training that I was able to attend when I was there for three days. Next slide, okay. Some of the regular things that I do every year, picture day, we just had, I was there for most of the day. I've been doing good deeds for the kids, I do it at the middle school and the elementary school, so when a kid does something good, I give them a picture, we take a picture, and then I give them a little prize, and then it's on the bulletin board and stuff at school. Continue to do my, you know, time spent with my at-risk kids. I've had one kid that I've been reading with him since second grade, he'll now be in sixth grade this year, so we'll see if I can continue that. And then just the fun things that I get to do, the kindergarten donut party is always a good time, I usually go to the glow dance and take pictures with the kids there, so. The middle school, continue the good deeds, I participated in the MLL night, which is always a fun event. We did our service project again at Trinity Pines this year, we did it a little different, we split the kids up into two groups, so we didn't have so many kids, and it seemed to work out better. I was there for the Black Hawk, which was kind of fun, I have a bulletin board and a mailbox at the middle school, so, just some fun events. I was invited into the life skills class this year to meet with some of those kids, and that was amazing, so. And then at the high school, I usually assist Mr. Vogel and Mr. Anan with the first day meetings. I did my parking spots last year, which seemed to go over really good with the kids. They're nominated by teachers, again, for doing good deeds, they're just being good kids, and they get a parking spot right in the front row for two weeks. Homecoming, we brought a guest speaker in last year that wasn't really successful. He talked to the kids, which was great, but we didn't have much adult participation after. And then I still do the ninth grade classes, I do the current events class, senior portfolios, prom, graduation, all of that. Some new things that I did this year, the wellness fair was new, and I think that that one is scheduled again, so I hope to participate, and I brought Hugo to the wellness fair, which his night out is always there. And then I helped out with the Young Men's Academy, that was kind of, kind of started, I think, maybe April, but it was really kind of neat, I think they had about 20 kids, usually that, 15 to 20 kids that participated, so I helped with that, so that was kind of fun. Yost, which I think I presented on with Mrs. Weldon, we did our annual, we're gonna try to do an annual senior prom with the senior citizens in the community, that's the main picture on the top. It was so well-received, there was a blurb, one of the news channels was there, if you were able to catch that, but everybody really enjoyed it, and we hope to just expand on it this year. We have now partnered with Lakeside, too, so we're gonna host a morning of training with Lakeside kids and the public school kids, and then an afternoon of bingo to continue the Yost program. Some preventative things, I'm always helping with the lockdowns or lockout drills that we do. Mentoring is a big part of my job, crisis planning, we started the safety, bus safety presentations at the elementary school to get the little kids to behave on the bus, bike safety, bike rodeo, we brought that back. This year was year two. The Dare Curriculum, bulletin boards, reading with at-risk kids, so, just some examples. So some of the things that I think are great for this position is I meet monthly with human services and then with each of the buildings, the elementary, middle, and high school, and we just kind of talk about some of those at-risk kids, what's going on in the community, because a lot of times that overflows into school. What can, what are we seeing at home with them, and then is there something that we can all work together to make it easier for them? I've done some reentry meetings after kiddos are suspended for whatever reason, whether it's, they did something wrong, or whatever, whether it was a fight, or alcohol, or those kinds of things. Traffic patrol in the morning, responding to all types of complaints, and then I have the number charts, I think, to follow. So this year, I believe we had 221 complaints that I responded to, or school-related complaints. Last year, I think it was 224, so not much of a difference, but that, so the purple is from 23, 24, and then the gray is this year, at each of the schools. So if you look at this slide, this one is, it's a little hard to give you the exact numbers, because a lot of times these complaints are so, there's so much more to them. I might get called for a social media thing, and it might turn into an alcohol and drug thing, or it might turn into a sexting thing, or it might turn into something else, but we have to classify it one way. All of our complaints take so much more time, it's not just as simple, I go in there, I interview the kid, I write him a ticket, or whatever. Especially with social media and cell phone use, those investigations can take weeks, sometimes months. And so it's, the numbers are kind of, it's, it's hard to differentiate what they actually are. I may get called up for disorderly conduct, and then there might be alcohol involved, or something like that, or vaping, you just never know. So it's really kind of hard to differentiate the numbers. I try to make it like what I was called for, and then that's kind of what it's classified at. This is just some more numbers, and it's each individual school, like all other complaints, that can be anything like a check welfare, if a kid's not shown up at school, one of the, like, the elementary school, call me and say, hey, can you just go check on this student? So that would kind of be like an all-other. Alcohol and other drugs. Counseling is kind of all-encompassing, too. That can be anything from a kid just yelling at a teacher to crying in class, it can be so many different things. And that's where I think those meetings with human services and the, and the support staff come into play, so we kind of get to know those kids that are at risk. Disorderly conduct is kind of a catch-all, sensitive, that can be like a sexual abuse, child abuse, suicide, that type of stuff. Social media, trunacy, and then vaping. The disposition, my citations went up a little bit this year, from 33 to 40. Again, the counseling numbers are kind of hard to understand, because I think I counsel everybody that I come into contact with, even if I write them a ticket, I'm talking to them about it. Juvenile referrals went up a little bit. I do feel like a lot of those juvenile referrals are the same kids over and over again. It's not that I cited, or I referred 21 kids, a lot of times it's maybe five kids that get multiple referrals. And then warnings unfounded, it's kind of all there for you. This is just a disposition for each of those, if you want to look at them all. Again, my goal is not to write tickets or do juvenile referrals, I would much rather counsel and talk and try to figure things out, but I feel like sometimes we have to do a little bit more. I did not search anybody at school in the last year, they were usually school, searched by school or empty pockets, that kind of thing, but I did not do any searches. Any questions, I guess, about that stuff before I just kind of tell you what's coming up?
I just want to pop in, you do a lot of preventative work and communication around Speak Up, Speak Out, and we see that because the students do use that app quite a bit, and I know that's due to a lot of the groundwork you do right at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, and maybe that's one stat we should add, is how many of these come from Speak Up, Speak Out complaints? I don't think there's too many, maybe a dozen I got throughout the year, but it would be interesting to see.
Which is mostly bullying and vaping.
Yeah.
It's not usually a threat.
No, no, I haven't had any threats.
So you had mentioned about, you know, cellphone, coming in for some sort of social media thing, or something on the cellphone, is that stuff that you usually, that is happening outside of school, or some of that stuff that's happening in school?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be both. It can be, somebody reports to the principal that somebody made a tic-tac the night before and said something mean, or, you know, was bullying somebody, and then it gets reported to the school, and then they usually notify me, and I'll come in and talk to them about it, and then we notify parents and stuff, too. So both.
Okay.
Just in the kind of broad world of safety, you know, with the things we do with students to educate or train them on what to do in certain safety situations, what kinds of, because I always worry, you know, are they just gonna be freaking out, you know, when those things happen? What more, what are the more prominent ways that in the safety world, in your world, handling that kind of situation, where kids are getting rattled?
Yeah. Honestly, I, it's different for every school, obviously. I mean, you have the kiddos at the elementary school, and I'm assuming you're talking about like a lockdown, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the elementary school, it's completely different than it is at the high school, right? We teach those kids that they basically just need to be quiet and listen to directions from the teacher. You're always gonna have kids that get scared and startled, and they're crying, whatever. That's kind of a different, I did read a book, I think, to the first graders this year, about lockdowns in school and why we're there. But that's, it's a totally different bargain than when you get up to the high school. And I, I think one of my goals would be to train like the middle school and the high school kids better, because at that age, when we're doing the run, hide, fight, I want them to be able to fight. I don't want them to hide, I don't want them, but I also want to, want them to understand that if they're not, if they don't have it in them to fight, that's okay, too. But when I go up to the high school and I see these boys that are six feet, three inches tall, 200 pounds, I want them to fight, you know, if they're comfortable doing it. So I think we need to do a better job at training the middle school and the high school kids to do that. Right now, we just do the lockdown drills where they have to be quiet, and, you know, we go through and we check the doors and make sure the lights are out and all that, but I think we need to do a better job of that.
Well, I was gonna say, we've been doing this for a long time, right? This has been around, when I was teaching, eight years ago, right? So I think that is a natural progression, like, as you're little, you start here, and then as you grow, you learn more, you're in more control of your body and your awareness and understandings, and so it naturally makes sense to
Yep.
Add a little bit more to their exposure and knowledge and what comes next.
And we do training with the teachers, I have a whole day or a whole morning scheduled, like, on the 26th, and I tell the older teacher, or the teachers, the older kids, middle school and high school, in every class, find your leaders, and find those kids that you think will be able to help you, whether it's barricading the door, getting kids out the window, or fighting. Find those kids and just have a conversation with them and say, hey, if this were to happen, this is what I would expect from you, or can I expect this from you? So.
Okay, thank you.
So coming up, actually, this was just this last weekend, we did a Cops and Cones event at Jersey Junction, it was kind of a rainy day, so we didn't get the turnout we expected, but it was still really fun, they invited us to come up, and a bunch of kiddos came out and got ice cream when I was scooping. I'm in the middle of kind of organizing all the stuff that we had stuffed the squad, it was pretty full, so I'm excited about that. One thing Watertown PD's done at the last couple of years is a sensory-friendly open house of the police department, so I'm hoping to do one of those this year, the school year, I think that'd be amazing to do. And then Coffee with a Cop, I've been doing it at Lakeside for the last couple of years, there's actually a National Coffee with a Cop Day in October. So I've been doing it at Lakeside, and I hope to bring it to the high school this year as well. So those are just some of the upcoming things that I have.
I was just gonna say, thanks for your presence, you're everywhere, all the time, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, okay, update on enrollment and hiring.
Yes, so when I wrote this, I thought we were done hiring all of our professional staff. We'll have one more position to fill at the high school, so we're working on that, and almost done with our paraeducators. Other than that, we've pretty much wrapped up. Much like that, our enrollment, you know, shifts daily now, it's like up, down, people moving in, people moving out, so we're really, these last two weeks, we start to see a lot of shifting around in the numbers, but not, no wide-sweeping changes that would cause alarm. But you can see from the comparison from last year to this year, that overall, we're relatively flat, if you don't count that larger graduating class, you can see from the numbers that this year's seniors are kind of that last really big class, and then the numbers start leveling out between 100 and 110-ish, 105 or so. So that is strong news. As you saw from some of the updates, we had a significant number of teachers at our leadership training on August 4th, 5th, and 6th. We sent the pictures out of those teams to not only our staff, but to our parents, too. So I just talked with staff again today who participated, who said they actually took a nap after this training, I think all of us, after a day of looking at data and problem-solving for eight hours a day, were really wiped out at the end of that training, but we're all very excited to see how we can promote the teacher leadership in the different grade levels and departments. Our admin team has met twice since then to get plans ready to go for the school year. So that training was just, I think, exactly what we needed to start us off on the right foot in our school improvement plans. And lastly, again, our school district was awarded the WIA Award of Excellence. We continue to do really good work in the high school between Mr. Anan and Mr. Vogel, really just promoting not only, you know, success in athletics, but really building the whole character, really that sportsmanship. And I know throughout the year, Mr. Anan gets emails from officials stating that they appreciate how respectful our kids are and our fans are when they come to officiate events, and that goes a long way, because officials are also in high demand and short supply. So just another honor that the high school has received. That's the end of my report.
For the plan going forward, are the, or the district, okay, the administrative staff, are they gonna provide their goals to the board, like, in September, October, November?
They will. In the September board meeting, the plan was for all of the principals, just to give an update on how the first three, two, three weeks of school went, and then I'll work with you through the committee structure again, so they can go a little bit more in-depth. I know, especially when we start that off, those reports, you know, takes closer to an hour. That'll come after we do the fall testing, so it'll probably be closer to October when you see those reports.
Super. All right. Any other questions? All right, we will move on to Jamie's report.
Good evening, I am here to report, do our annual report of seclusion and restraint. Down below on the first page, you'll see the definition, seclusion is defined as the involuntary confinement of a student away from peers in a supervised area, where a student is prevented from leaving. And then the physical restraint is down there below as well, where we may be putting a hold on a student, both used at a very, very last resort. I'll get into the training that we provide our staff to make sure everyone is trained in a way that is, excuse me, trained in a way that is preventing any physical restraint. So above you will see in the table that last year, in the 24, 25 school year, we had three students that, or three instances of seclusion, and five instances of restraint. You'll see that broken down below, where for seclusion, there were two students involved in those three instances, and then for the physical restraint, we had the one student, and then three students that made up the four at the middle school. And you'll see that we don't have, we didn't have any at the high school. Let's see, and then getting into the proactive practices and training, we hired, or we trained, we had two new staff members certified, so we have in-house training. Steph Ingram and Michael Rorody, they actually launched today the first NBCI training for our new staff. The focus of NBCI is to really focus on the de-escalation techniques to prevent the need for physical intervention whenever possible. We have all our special education staff trained, teachers, paraeducators, therapists, and then we also have many general education staff, school safety teams, administrators. I was calculating, I think we have around 60 to 70 staff in the, in I was calculating, I think we have around sixty to seventy staff in the, in the district trained, because it is so important that they are trained in those de-escalation strategies so that we don't get to the point of physical intervention. And then in addition to Ms. Ingram and Mr. Rorody, we have Kathleen Crane, who's a trainer in the district, and she's kind of phasing out and passing the torch over to them, so it's really nice to have her veteran experience as well. And I also wanted to add, whenever there is an incident, we meet as a team to debrief, go over, you know, what happened, what could be done differently, and then we are always drafting new plans to make sure students have what they need. Any questions?
I had one, thanks, Jamie. I noticed in the SRL whole report, the topic of therapy dogs. Do we have therapy dogs in the district, in the schools?
We don't have anything like systematically in place by any means. I know that Jess will bring in her dog, and then we have, our DHH teacher brings in a therapy dog, but they're more based in the office and not necessarily set up
In the classroom.
with students, but it's definitely an idea we, you know, we could consider.
Thank you.
I love how many teachers are trained, right, and have this knowledge. Something to maybe consider is just doing a high-low level overview for all staff at a PD sometime, because I think those de-escalation techniques could help in even the minor situations that happen in everyday classroom.
Absolutely. The de-escalation strategies are really great in our program. In the last two years, I think we've trained all new staff. This year, with the timing of when we needed to do the NBCI training, we decided to hold off, and we're going to do it mid-year, or, you know, a couple months into school, we're going to train the new staff, but we, you know, it's, it could be beneficial for all staff, like you're saying.
Yeah, and I was gonna, I was just thinking, too, do they have like refresher courses? Like, do they ever like take back new things, right? Like, hey, this might be something new as data is compiled and things happen over the years. Do they ever add to that curriculum and training and things like that?
They do.
Yeah.
Which is beneficial for us to have two new people trained, because they're getting the current information, and, you know, Kathleen was just trained probably four years ago, and I was trained within that time period, too, and then, I'm no longer a trainer, but we are getting fresh information and eyes on the program.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, board reports. Facility referendum updates. We did have a core team meeting last week, and I, I mean, the minutes from the previous meeting were provided to all the board members, but just what was discussed at the core team was some clear, just some, the high school, more detailed, what this is going to be, and blah, blah, blah. So with the minutes from that meeting will be provided when, when they, but everything is moving on as scheduled, it's on target, it's on schedule, as well as on budget, the, and then another discussion was about the auditorium construction, so that's moving along as well, and Luke is very much helping with that, so.
We had a 4K furniture meeting today, so Wendy and Brad were there, along with our 4K teachers and EC teachers and the special ed teachers that serve that population, so that's, because part of the RFP that we put out was to be able to pilot that furniture this school year, so that pilot furniture should be in place during one of the days in October where 4K doesn't have school, so they'll come in and they'll stage that furniture, so it'll allow the 4K teachers to be able to use it with kids and see what works, what doesn't work, what do they like, what do they not like. And, and part of that pilot then is donated to the school district from Duett, the furniture company, so we get to keep that furniture. That was part of the condition
That's cool.
of that RFP. So we're excited to see that, and then they can use that in other places. That'll help when we go in to actually purchase the furniture, that we make sure that it's something that they'll actually use and want to, to use with the kids, so. So we appreciate the 4K and EC teachers coming in a couple of times here this summer to work with us on that.
And then the solar project is moving along. If you drive by, they, I know the middle school, and I, I mean, lots of work, work there, and I believe at the elementary school, too, but I'm not.
We're just, and, I mean, with the entire construction project, whether it's the solar or even the work we're doing with the UWA or the bus barn, everything is kind of held up in the permitting phase right now, so, which takes quite a bit longer than what you expect. So, right, we've got several items tomorrow night on the city council meeting. A lot of those items take three readings in order to be approved. We'll be asking for another variance for the high school project, and then I'm working on the solar project for all the Buy America, Build America regulations, which is just really an itemized list of all of the components that are in the solar panels and the other materials to make sure that they meet the fifty-five percent guideline. So it's just, it's a lot of paperwork for the entire project on the backend of us, so it probably looks like not a lot is going on. It'll be exciting, I think, though, when we see the groundbreaking here at the end of October, beginning of November at the elementary, and then that project, that project is just about ready to go. So then you'll start seeing something physical happening in the school district.
Can I ask about the Buy America, or what did you call it? Did you know about the guidelines when you were applying for the grant?
Yes, yeah, that's a federal requirement for any federal project done in the United States.
Concerned that we're not going to fit within that?
For part of that, we'll be applying for a waiver on that, just because the solar panel production is so slim here in the United States, so that's part of the work. There's other components with the solar project that we've already got the verification from the manufacturers, that it does meet the fifty-five percent, so, right, we'll, we'll be putting in a waiver. So we're right now, as I said, before I put in the waiver, we've been working with the Public Service Commission on whether the labor in America counts towards that fifty-five percent, so we're seeking clarification on that.
And worst-case scenario, if they don't accept the waiver, what happens?
Then that part of the project isn't able to be funded through the grant. So we'll continue to work through both sides of that, and it's been pretty common here in the United States, just because of what is manufactured with the solar panels, so.
Yeah, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, the companies do, like, we, we can hire consultants to do all the paperwork, but you're taking, and you and your staff, Tanya, are taking it on, and that's saving the district a whole lot of money for doing, for doing all the, the solar panel paperwork.
And we've been pretty fortunate, so we'll be waiting to hear next week an additional twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we weren't expecting, hopefully as well, that we should be receiving as far, and also some additional energy rebates that we didn't, we weren't aware of either. So so far, good news. I was a little bit worried about the direct pay with the change in administration, but the direct pay is still alive and well, so it's just, the goal is to get all that paperwork in before June thirtieth of next year, which is when that's all due.
Wonderful. All right, are there any questions on the other, the referendum?
Just a comment, I, I'm getting a large number of, you know, when I see people, how's the referendum going? And I think it's like you say, they're all waiting to see the actual physical, you know, piece.
And you did say there are no budget concerns, right, Amy?
There, the, there are no, like, no significant budget concerns. Some of the high school might be going over, but then it's covered, it can be covered by some of the auditorium savings. So significant budget concerns, no.
Correct, so with the contingencies that are set in place, they have no concerns with, with their ad, so kind of planning, knowing that some things are going to go up and down, and there'll be fluctuation in different pieces, those contingencies are built in, and so we had a pretty in-depth conversation about that with Fendorf, and, and we're good. We, you know, we, that's why we continue to have our meetings and do those budget updates as the design is figured out and finalized, and as soon as those are finalized, then they'll go back and kind of look back at their numbers and make sure that everything's shaking out as it should. So we had that meeting and, based on the contingencies, so.
I was going to say, that's good, because in all of the world, right, prices are going up, and we're dealing with things we didn't anticipate, or, you know, whatever, so that's good to hear.
Yep.
The one reason I know, with working with Peter Sandin and Fendorf, is they do watch tariffs, they do watch things, and I've seen them purchase materials ahead of time and store them, and to, you know, in the anticipation that things are either going to be a short supply or that prices are going to go up. I mean, we can't control the high school project, because we're still a year out from, you know, the start of that construction, but things are already out to bid for the entire elementary project, because that is starting, so, but I think, and then the bus barn as well, too, so we should, we should be in pretty good shape with that.
All right, any other questions? All right, has anyone signed up for community comments?
No.
All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following: July twenty-first, regular board meeting minutes, August twelfth, board workshop proceedings, treasures report, and vouchers and invoices, LMASD co-curricular handbook, and the personnel report. Is there any item that the, any of the board members would like to pull out for separate discussion?
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any questions or discussion for the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, action items. The, the supplemental increases for the professional staff, that was discussed at the committee meeting last week, and that's the first action item?
So you're looking for a motion now?
Yes. How did you read my mind?
Yeah, I move the board approve the supplemental compensation for the six professional staff members as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, for the raises for the administrators, directors, and exempt staff, as was discussed in the last week's committee meeting.
So I'll move the board approve the raises as presented for the administrators, directors, and exempt staff as presented.
I will second.
All right, any questions or concerns or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, six E, creation of the class of twenty-twenty-nine, this year's incoming freshman, student activity account and organization, and this is an annual thing, step that needs to be done, so.
I'll move the board approve the class of twenty-twenty-nine student activity account and organization.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, revision meeting time for September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular board meeting?
Right, because the annual meeting's voted on by the electors, that meeting time is not possible to change, so with the shifting in our meeting time, we just need to adjust the regular board meeting to six-thirty.
I'll move the board approve the start time of the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular school board meeting to six-thirty.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, finally, for the action item, six E, the gifts, and again, as I say every month, that it's amazing how much this community supports the school district and with the donated time and donated monetary gifts.
You know, I did notice, too, I mean, it's all timing on what types of gifts, but there's a lot of things for student supplies, which I think are really important.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
The board would like to thank the following generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs here at the Lake Mills Area School District. We've got Terry Zebel for the donation of school supplies valued at approximately a hundred and fifty dollars, St. Vincent DePaul for the donation of an eight-hundred-dollar Amazon gift card for student supplies, the Lake Mills Area Community Foundation for the donation of one thousand dollars for the Young Men's Group service projects, Mike Winter for the donation of one thousand five hundred to the High School Gay-Straight Alliance Club, and the Lake Mills Moravian Church for the donation of school supplies and forty backpacks valued at approximately one thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
Wow. Now, does this have to have a motion to accept? I forget.
I believe so, actually.
So I will move to accept, I'll make the first motion to accept all these gifts.
I'll second, oh, go ahead.
That's all you can.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, for future action items, for the September meeting, the Spain France trip report by the students, the start of the school year updates by the principals, the oath of office for our new student board representatives, the safety plan, overnight field trip approvals, and closed session for district administrator calls for the next year, so. All right. Then, if there is nothing else to discuss, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses, one, parentheses, C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the district administrator's evaluation.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Baszlik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Abby Hale?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye, all right, we are in closed session. Is there a separate room?